Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. If you will stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. And we did not have anybody sign up for the invocation this evening, so there will be none.
My opinion is this.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. If you will stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. And we did not have anybody sign up for the invocation this evening, so there will be none.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, the first item on tonight's agenda would be the citizens' concerns about items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. Is there anyone who wishes to address the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? One up. And then when you come up, please, we ask that you give your name and address.
Turn on the microphone.
Oh, can you hit that button right in the front of your mic there? There we go, thank you.
I'm John Metzler. I live at 113 Lake of the Forest. I am the chair of the water quality committee for Lake of the Forest. I have not had a chance to talk to all of our homes association board members, but I'm pretty sure I speak for the full board in expressing our concerns about the recent silt incident from the compass development. On Wednesday afternoon, late, we started noticing a large influx of silt-laden flow coming into our lake. We looked into it, and it was apparent that it was coming from the compass development site. And we had a lot of concerns about that for a variety of reasons. To give you a little bit of background, the lake has, in the past, over the last 20 years, had a lot of issues with algae blooms and invasive aquatic weeds. We've been successful in dealing with those, but the last two years, we had blue-green algae blooms. And we've consulted with a lot of experts, including the K-State private lakes expert. And they've all advised us that we need to make our lake deeper. And so we bought a dredge some years ago, very expensive, tens of thousands of dollars. And we spend tens of thousands of dollars every year to operate it. So when this silt comes into our lake, it sort of feels like we're taking one step forward and two steps backward. I have expressed my concern to the city engineer, and I've also expressed it to the state. We had, as probably you all know, an extensive problem with compass development, with the silt fences along Riverview last year. And again, a lot of silt came into our lake. So this is why it's important to us to minimize the amount of silt coming in. Now, I spent 45 years in the water business. I'm no expert on stormwater issues, but I do know that the city is what's called an MS4. That's a municipal separate storm sewer system. And that gives you a permit from the state that gives the city the authority and the obligation to enforce the Federal Clean Water Act. And I just don't think, in this case, that was done. In talking to the city's engineer, I got the impression that the staff doesn't even know that what was going on, what caused this discharge of silt to the lake. I do have my trusty watershed map that shows where the compass development is and how it gets to our lake. But I would appreciate if you could direct the city staff to look into this further and do a better job of managing the contractor and developer on the site. Thank you.
Metzler, I will mention that I became aware of that today, that issue. I have asked, talked to staff, and they are on top of it, trying to understand what's going on with the contractors. So I will try to stay on top of it as well.
Okay, Justin said he'd give me a call when he learned something.
Okay.
They do have the pictures. They do have the pictures, and it was all forwarded to them, the photos of the...
Yes, we can document what happened. Talking about our pictures?
No, I said, the staff does have those pictures. We forwarded them to them.
Okay.
So they do have those, that helps a lot.
We'd love to see those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Is there any else, anyone else who wishes to address the council? We got several people, come on up.
Hello, my name's Kara Segaloff. I live at 732 Lynda Lane. I am here tonight asking for some leeway on a dead tree that is on my property. I was notified on May 27th, I actually received the letter on May 28th, day after Memorial Day, that I had a tree that needed to be taken down in 10 days from the date of notice. The letter dated, notice was dated on 5/21. We've had issues with mail, we've had issues with trash on our block, so I assume that's why I didn't get it until the 28th. That left me till the 31st to get a tree cut down in my front yard. Prior to this letter, we had had some storms in the Kansas City area. So I worked the week of the 28th to get as many quotes as I possibly could. I was not able to secure a quote until June 11th, where I got Tid Tree, Tid Tree and Crane to give me a quote to do all of the work that I wanted for a decent price. I am a single mother, I have four children, so for me to take down a tree in less than 10 days was a task in itself. On the 31st, I came home from work and was smelling gas in my front yard. I called the gas company, found out that I had a gas leak between my meter and the main of my home. So I was forced to put either the tree on hold or my gas line on hold to repair. I only had the money to do one of the two repairs. I got the repair done on the gas line. It took three weeks for that mess to come out, get the meter moved, my plumber to move, and restud out all the gas line in my home. I do have estimates here and receipts here from that work. It cost me $1,900 to do that work. On July 26th, I came home and received a notice on the front door of my garage that said I had been fined $150. I called Mark Stites on, sorry. May 31st, I left him a message in the morning, asking him to call me so that we could rectify the situation. I had not heard from him in the afternoon, so I called again, knowing that it was on a Friday, hoping that I would be able to catch him. On June 6th, I had not heard back from him, so I tried him again, morning and later in the afternoon. I left messages all four times, I never received a call back from Mr. Stites. I was trying to rectify the situation. I now have secured the bid to get the tree taken down. I'm waiting for Tid Tree to schedule an actual appointment with me. I have that confirmed and signed estimate here for the tree to be taken down. Due to Mr. Stites not getting back with me, I feel like the city failed me. There was no communication other than the first letter, and I was trying to rectify the situation and give him a full picture of what I was dealing with. I'm asking for a 30-day grace. I do have my own household bills that I still have to maintain and need at least 30 days to rectify the tree. I've made a deposit payment, and so I only owe $1,000 to get the tree down. But I'm asking for an extension of time and for the $150 to be waived today.
When did you receive the notice about the green?
The green notice was marked on my garage on July 26th.
July 26th, and isn't there a timeframe when they can appeal those? Ms. Hogan?
It's 10 days.
10 days, so we're outside of 10 days unless she has attempted to appeal it, but could not get...
I attempted to appeal the first notice, and that was when I called Mr. Stites, because I was not aware of what process I needed to do. It said to contact Mr. Stites at this number, and that's what I was attempting to do within the first 10 days.
Okay, anything that you have detail-wise, if you could go ahead and turn it over to staff before you leave this evening. And we will, we will talk about that with staff. I apologize if Mr. Stites was not able to get back to you in a timely manner. He's usually very active, very good about getting back to people. So I apologize if he did not get back to you. And I know his, his goal is always just to get an issue resolved. He's not interested in trying to make life harder for people. So I don't know where the drop in communications was. But give us, please, if you could supply any information you can on when you've tried to contact him, when you've tried to get ahold of him, and then we can go from there and see what we can do to help you with.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening, city council. I am Bobby Hodge II. I live at 13702 Lawrence Street. I'm here to discuss a couple things, one of which is, so I run a Facebook group called Bonner Springs, Kansas, Past, Present, Future, and it discusses everything about Bonner Springs, whether it's the past, the present, or the future. And it's a page that I had started on New Year's Day 2024. And now I have over 200 members, about 218. And I just, I love, I love the city. I've been, I've been a resident for 30 years. And it's something I would not trade for anything else. And now to the second subject. So every Tuesday, my trash and my neighbor's trash gets taken. One thing I've noticed is, is that with some of my neighbors, like some of their trash is all over their yards. And that's a, that's an issue that's been, that's been ongoing for quite some time now. I don't know who, who that would, who would be able to take care of that issue.
Which issue? The failure to have trash picked up, which we've had discussions in regards to that with...
Yes.
Staff and elected officials? Or are we talking about just loose trash and blowing around the neighborhood before it gets picked up?
The latter, not the former.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at our ordinance if those, if the trash needs to be in a secured barrel, not loose and flying around, and that could end up going into a codes issue with Mr. Stites, so...
Yes, because, like, I've, I've always been a very, very well-detailed person when I, when I see things. Like, I'm, I'm very observant, and I've, I do notice that some trash, some trash cans are very loose and some are overflowed with a lot of trash. And that's one of the results behind it.
Okay, we'll bring it up to staff and let them know. And you've got the address correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Uh, Hodge, no S.
Oh, sorry, you'd think I'd know that.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Barbara Cameron, 807 Lake of the Forest. And I'm just here to kind of back up Mr. Metzler that the silting issue was a big issue for our community. We're, our community is over 100 years old, so we've been around a long time. And my concern is if this silt issue and all the, obviously, we've got more development coming up north, up north of the lake and into the watershed. I mean, and development is good, that's not, that's not my problem. But we do need to please emphasize the fact that they need to do their silt control. We've got about, I think, 162 homes in our community. We pay a lot of taxes. If Lake of the Forest were to somehow become Swamp of the Forest, our property values would go way down, as would the revenues of the city. You know, nobody's going to want to live out there if it's, if there's no lake. I live lake, I'm fortunate enough to be lakefront, so I sure don't want to have a swamp in my, to look out and have to smell. So I'm just, please, please, please emphasize to the developers that you've got a community that's been here over 100 years, we all pay taxes, we all appreciate development, and, and we know things change. But please, please, please do what state and federal regulations mandate, and please control the silt and the overflow that's going to destroy our lake otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one else, then we will move on with the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight involves the minutes of the July 22nd council meeting, claims for city operations, second quarter 2024 financial reports, the public use request for the class of 1974 for their 50th reunion, and then voting delegates for the annual League of Kansas Municipalities Conference Business Meeting. Is there anyone, is staff need, wish to poll anything? Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to poll the item? Council, wish to poll anything? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. Roll, please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto new business. We have BSCP 0124 Comprehensive Plant Amendment with the Bonner Springs Downtown Master Plan. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Mark Lee, Community Development, Community Development Director. First item on the agenda is the Planning Sustainable Places Plan for downtown Bonner Springs. You guys have seen several presentations over the past couple of years. You just saw one, what, a month ago? And now this is the final completed package in front of you this evening. That's all I have on that one, sir.
Anything else added by staff? Is there anybody from citizens who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan to incorporate the Bonner Springs Downtown Master Plan as an addendum. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by, well, let's not do the oh there yet, I guess. Mr. Shannon, do you have anything you'd like to ask, comments?
Nothing at this point.
Mr. Kip?
Nothing.
Ms. Gurley? Mr. McManahan?
No questions.
No questions, thanks for your work on this.
No questions.
Mr. Reeves? Did, did you say no?
Oh, I thought you had.
Anything?
Everything.
Okay.
I thought you had something.
So now, let's go ahead, and you've got the motion and the second by Ms. Gurley, and then the second by Ms. Blanks, so let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number two.
Sir, if I could, I'd just like to thank Chris Sanders and Beth Dawson with Mark. Beth was with Mark, and Chris was with LJC. They're the team that worked on the plan with our stakeholders and our committees, so I just wanted to thank both of them.
Well, we appreciate their efforts as well. It was, the presentation was a wonderful document, so hopefully, maybe we can follow through on a few of those items. On with item number BSZ 00324 Unified Development Ordinance Amendment for recreational vehicles.
Good evening again, Mark, Community Development Director. This evening, we're looking at an ordinance to allow for recreational vehicle parks. Part of this is tied to the Mattel proposal and some, some thoughts and ideas that they had as far as allowing camping on their, their site and within their premise. Technically, we don't allow for RV parking anymore, or RV campgrounds, I guess I should say. So these regulations put those in, in place. They give guidance to where they can go, how they can be operated, how they must look, as well as some retractable clauses at the end of it. It was received fairly well at the planning commission. They all voted in favor of it. I've been contacted several times over the three and a half, almost four years I've been here in regards to some proposals, individuals asking about them, more or less general questions and whatnot. Always kind of guide them down the path of we, we don't really have allowances for them. But now we've got some in place that, that if they would like to pursue that, it's a new zoning district, they'll have to go through rezoning. They're also allowed by special use permit only and not permitted by use. The regulations that are in place are pretty, I don't want to say strict, but I mean, they do put some things in place to make them look a certain way and feel a certain way as well.
Any additional staff input? Can I get a clarification from staff? Did this have a public hearing opened at the...
Yes, it sure did.
So no public comment here?
There was, there was only a couple, and they should be in your minutes too. They were really just some general questions.
Yeah, they, they were there. I just wanted to make sure, I, I didn't want to open up any, take any citizens' comments here if there was a public hearing opened.
I understand.
So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to create a zoning district for recreational vehicle parks.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Reeves. We'll start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
Nothing added here.
I have no questions.
No questions, thanks, Mark. No questions, just a comment. I know we get a lot of people looking for RV park locations because there's nothing within a, probably a 50-mile radius. And we have so many seasonal festivals and things and concerts that I think that we definitely have a place for this, and I'm glad we're adding it back in.
Will this be located inside the park or adjacent? It's just opening up, somebody could open one around.
So in one of the, it could be opened up, one around the place. I was actually contacted by some individuals that own property across from Sandstone in the past, and they were kind of looking at it, but that's, I think, since gone away. But there, from Mattel's proposal, it will be inside their park facility. You'll be able to drive your RV, stay there, you can go wherever you want, basically through Kansas City as well as the park.
I know we got an email from a concerned citizen that was, you know, worried about the park, but reading through a lot of this seems very detailed and strict as far as how, how and where they can be set up, so I think it's a good idea.
Mark, thanks, good job. Nothing more.
If there's nothing else, then I would go ahead and ask for the vote.
Shannon?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Lea, for both those items, appreciate it. Onto item number three, the 138th Street Project, KDOT supplemental agreement.
Good evening, members of city council. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This is relatively straightforward supplemental agreement with KDOT. It is related to the 138th Street Project. And essentially, it's a supplemental agreement to increase the grant funding related to the project. And the initial grant agreement was about $3.1 million in February of '22. And over the course of the last couple of years, the accumulation of other grants from projects that got started in the Mark area that couldn't get accomplished or got delayed, that funding is being redirected towards this particular project. As you may recall, this has been confirmed and awarded through KDOT. It is scheduled to start in February of '25. And, sorry, I had to think about it for a minute. And it is scheduled to be completed in '25, I might add, in about eight months. So there's not much else to say about it, other than it's a supplemental agreement they require to kind of firm up the funding and financing related to the project. Any questions?
Anything else from staff? Is there any residents, citizen that would like to speak on this matter at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve supplemental agreement number one with KDOT to confirm grant funding levels related to the 138th Street Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Blanks, a second by Ms. Long. I'm just going to be here with you, Mr. McManahan, any questions, comments?
No questions.
Ms. Gurley?
None.
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 No questions, thanks, Frank.
Yep.
No question.
No questions, just, it's going to be good to get this thing underway.
It was underway before I got here, so yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, just a clarification, we are still responsible for 20% of that project.
That's correct, of the construction, yes.
Had we not gotten this amendment for the additional funding, anything beyond, we would end up having to pay 23%, 24%, 25% if we'd exceeded...
Yes.
That threshold. But this gives us a more buffer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And...
There's nothing else? I would ask for the vote.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abart, appreciate it. She's trying to figure out the ladder she's going to have to have to get in and out of her house now.
Flyover. I want a flyover.
Onto item number four, memorandum of understanding with Unified School District 204 internship program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Billy Nav, Chief of Police. What we're here to request tonight is, we've been working with USD 204 to initiate an internship program where students can work alongside a police officer and kind of learn what law enforcement is all about. This internship will prepare students to understand what it takes and includes to be a police officer. And furthermore, it'll make them well attuned for their future educational pursuits. Representative from school districts here, say a few words as well.
Hello, I'm Teresa Snyder. I'm the college and career student advocate at Bonner Springs High School. And this may seem like a new proposal and a new MOU document, but the kind of revival request is what we're here for. Mr. Davis, who you may know as Officer Davis, he was formerly BSPD. He was our school resource officer, and now he's our law and public safety career pathway instructor. And he did a great job kind of building that partnership and that groundwork with Bonner Springs PD and having an internship. And then I know around COVID, there were some complications and scheduling issues, and it kind of went by the wayside for a little bit. So now we have a more practical working process to support the infrastructure, to revive that program and continue to build that out, and hopefully encourage students to work locally and maybe not look elsewhere at other departments where there might be similar programs already established, maybe with a bigger department or a bigger school district.
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Anything else from staff? Is there any resident that would like to speak on this matter at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to sign the MOU with District, or USD 204 to initiate an internship program.
Second.
Oh, that was resilient.
I didn't have an order to flip.
Is that a vote?
Well, we...
You got three seconds.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, and you already got a second on one, so we'll give it to Mr. McManahan. A second by Mr. McManahan.
I'll second too.
Oh, did you also? Oh, we're giving it to Mr. McManahan. Because he's within striking range.
Thank you.
So with that, Ms. Blanks, any comments, questions?
Thank you so much for your work on this. I know Teresa and I have had conversations about reviving this program and with Captain Pate. There's just a lot of paperwork and getting it, I just know how much work this took. And it's really exciting, and you know, I'm always such a fan of PD finding even more ways to connect with the community, specifically our younger audience. So I just think that's really great, and I'm really excited for this, so thank you.
No question.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, anytime we can have communication from police department to students, it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Mr. McManahan?
Yeah, I was just going to say...
Yeah, I was just going to say, when, when the program was in place, my son Blake, who's now a Kansas City, Kansas Police Officer, was involved in the, it was Mr. Long that was teaching criminal justice, and Officer Davis was the SRO at that time. And I remember the two, and I think it was Chief Suresky that was, right, he was our current, the chief during that time. Davis and Blake both got invited to go to Washington, DC. And, and it was just a hand-selected few that had that opportunity. And they were talking, and, and the purpose of that meeting there in DC, this is when, actually Biden was Vice President during the time, and so this is under the Obama Administration. They, they were bridging the gap between Police Department and community, which, and so I just, this is opportunistic. I think it's great that we're doing it, and couldn't pick a better time to start, to kind of reboot, or you say revise, a program such as this. So I, under, under your leadership, Chief, I think it's great to get this thing going, absolutely.
Echo.
I think this type of, you know, public-private partnership is brilliant, and, and thank you for whoever's all involved spearheading it. It's, it's wonderful. I hope it succeeds.
As a former teacher, and my father was in law enforcement a little bit, and what a, what a great marriage, thank you.
I just have one question. I'll precede it with a little bit of a story in that, first time I did a ride along a few years back with, then I can't remember if, forget his rank, but, actually, it was, I had to ride the horses. But it was, I apologize, I don't remember his rank before he left, but it was Officer Duran, Doran, I am Doran. And I remember when I started getting in the vehicle, he started pointing out, your vest is here, the gun release is there, this, and I'm like, what the heck did I get myself into? So that brings me up to the question, is liability-wise, are we covered insurance-wise through the city if something were to happen to one of these students on one of these ride-alongs?
That's what I had in my notes, was to reach out to our insurance company to make sure that we get all of the paperwork in place.
Okay. So I want to make sure everybody's properly covered, so.
So KSDE has, I can't remember what year, they kind of worked to lobby on behalf of this legislation, but there's state law that school districts have to have their liability cover students who are in an unpaid internship if that is a part of their schooling. And so the Law and Public Safety Pathway is a part of our career and technical education courses directly from the state. And so students who are in an unpaid internship are covered by the school's liability.
Were you going to say some, Chief, it looked like you were ready to say something.
Only thing I was going to say is, we also have a liability waiver that we utilize, which kind of covers, which we're going to have the parents sign, just to kind of make sure everybody's on the same page.
I mean, hopefully, everybody comes back home safe, but just to be on the same, we want to make sure everybody's properly covered in case something does go wrong, so. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, comments, I'll call for the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, appreciate it. I know Chief's sticking around, that's why I didn't thank you yet. On to item number five, acquisition of IA Pro software program.
Billy Knaff, Chief of Police, what we have before you is a recommendation to purchase IA Pro computer software along with what's called Blue Team. It's a comprehensive internal affairs investigation software, allows us to track complaints from the time that they're taken to the time of their final completion, as well as track some other analytical data like use of force, field-level discipline, which is probably a big one that we're kind of missing right now, that supervisors take. It also tracks compliments, vehicle accidents, and pursuits. So out of the CPSM study that we did, the Center for Public Safety Management Study, they recommended that we look forward to purchasing such a software and moving forward with its implementation. We originally looked at this back in 2022, but at that time, the budget didn't support us moving forward. And at this time, we believe that we found the financial means to move it forward with using some asset forfeiture funds, as well as some savings within our operational budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Staff, anything else to add? Is there any residents who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to sign an agreement with Verastream to provide the Police Department with IA Pro and Blue Team software.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. McManahan, and we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Shannon.
Chief, thanks for everything you do. I know it's just a constant, ongoing challenge, but you're doing a good job, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Does an officer's permanent record, so to speak, follow them around in their career?
Yes.
Does this software, or do agencies have access to this software that they can see what's happening?
They don't see what's happening, but under current statute, an agency that's doing a background check on an employee, prospective employee, has full access to all the files that we have, so they would have access through that means. It's not the same as like our human resources, where we may just verify dates of employment for our law enforcement to prevent what we call gypsy cops from moving around from department to department. Under statute, they have full access to all their files.
So if they're also using the same software, can they, do you give them access to these files, or?
We would give them access to the information, yes.
Mr. McManahan?
I have no questions.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thanks, Chief.
Ms. Long?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Nothing here.
I would, I just would like to add that I know you have done a wonderful job in, I think, creating relationships with our community, you know, for our Police Department of the Community, and I think this is just another positive step in making sure our department is transparent and that people don't feel like they're being abused by officers and that officers are taken advantage of situations. So I appreciate all your efforts here, Chief. Thank you. So there's nothing else? I would call for the vote.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto our last item, thank you very much, Chief, I appreciate it. Onto item number six, ward redistricting. I don't know if we need another presentation on this. You can just say whatever, say whatever I said last time, right?
That's right.
Of course, we probably should explain a little bit for those who might have been not in attendance for the workshops, so.
So the state of Kansas requires us to redistrict or to reevaluate our wards after each census. The last time the city was redistricted was, the process was in 2012 and 2013, and our population has changed by a little over 500 people since that time, so the council is obligated to look at redistricting again, and we presented two different options. The mayor, two of the council members, and myself met with a third-party contractor, came up with different options, presented two of them to the council, and we need a recommendation on which of the two we are going to send to the Wyandotte County Election Office and the Secretary of State for approval. Once we get approval from them, then it will come back to the council as an ordinance to be approved and then would be put in place after the November election.
Thank you, Ms. Break, appreciate that. Is there anybody from citizens that would like to speak on this matter? Normally, we, I prefer to follow LKM policy, which is try to have a motion on the floor, so I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion, and whoever wants to put an option out there, and then if we vote it down, we can then put the other option up there. So I would call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city clerk to send a ward redistricting option number one to the Wyandotte County Election Office and the Kansas Secretary of State for approval.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. McManahan, so we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves, your thoughts?
And we can still change this in years, in the next year or two if we need to, right?
You could change it, but you can't change it based upon any numbers but the 2020 census, so.
But if we sense the need, because of, we know where the additions of, of constituents are in these apartments, we can probably do some calculating on our own, couldn't we?
No.
Yeah, but I don't know if I, go ahead, Ms. Break.
The state requires that it be as equally balanced as possible according to the most recent census numbers. So even if our population changes, we still have to have four wards that are as equally balanced as possible based on what our population came back from the 2020 census as.
They hemmed and hawed, didn't they?
Anything else? Nothing else. Ms. Long?
No, I think both options are great, so whichever option we choose, it's not going to affect anyone too negatively, so I think option one's a great option.
Ms. Blanks?
I agree, they're both good options. I just, either way, it doesn't, like you said, affect anybody too much. I just thought with option two, it stuck out to me that it allows for growth and development in that area. That was the only reason I was kind of looking at that option, but, I mean, they're both balanced out pretty well.
Ms. Blanks, Ms. McManahan?
I like both.
You can only vote for one.
I think in our meeting, we were favoring, was it two over one, or did it matter? I don't think it mattered, yeah, we kind of left it up to the rest of the council members, because we were representing Ward One, which virtually no change and stuff, but I think the numbers are really close with one or two, whichever way you want to go with it, right? So, and I know there was concerns about extenuated growth and all that stuff, but it really won't matter, because the decisions are based off the 2020, so.
If we do it at the proper time, it'll be only eight years before we do it again.
Well, and that's true, so. I, I could go either way. I guess two for me. Both?
You will have to vote. I know this was a crazy puzzle to put together, so thank you guys for making the time to do it. I prefer option two because it keeps both Lee Valley and Deerfield together as whole neighborhoods rather than splitting them up. That was really my deciding factor.
Same, that's the only thing I see, is that those two neighborhoods are together, so option two seemed to make the slightest more sense.
Mike? Ms. Gurley, why didn't you?
What I just said.
He's for two.
One.
Do we feel like, Roger, do you feel like keeping the neighborhoods together is important, or that it doesn't make a difference?
Oh, I feel keeping, keeping them together is important, and option one does provide that.
For Deerfield, but not Lee Valley?
Okay, with, with that one, with that one little slice out.
You have two blocks out there.
Right, and, but we've experienced that in Ward Three with Deerfield. I honestly, I really didn't like the way it was laid out, to be honest with you, it was like a chimney, you know, and we're just kind of going up like that, yeah. No, I
Yeah, I've been studying them all week.
I really feel that the, the reason I saw number one is because of it impacting the fewest amount of people with, with a ward change. And I thought that was important, you know, because our families are going through enough now with, with taxes, with appraisals and everything else, and this is just kind of, I know that's not really.
I respect that. I think that there's, there are too many people in our city limits who don't know which ward they are in. And I know that all of us up here represent the entire city. We, you get calls from other wards, I get calls from other wards, so I don't know if that's a huge
I think part of the problem.
Impact do you think it would have?
Pardon me?
What specific impact do you think it would have on the families if their wards changed, should we all vote the same?
Well, I, I think that's very, very difficult. I'm not, I'm not sure I could, could answer that. This might help. I was talking with Chris and, this morning, and Chris, help me on this. You were talking with somebody, oh, it was one of the candidates for the last election, and they pointed out that the streets or the, something people, something wasn't.
That was a different issue. That was that the streets listed on the website were not correct, accurate to the wards, so we took them down off the website until all of this is done, so we can
So people then
I'd rather have
were looking at
No information than inaccurate information.
I couldn't remember exactly what it is. I just feel also that Ward Three is taking the biggest hit, to be honest with you. Ward One is not affected at all. Ward Two is not affected because it's a addition, okay? Ward Three and, Ward Three is now where we are, have 98, what was it, I'm sorry, 89 homes in Ward Three, where Ward Four had 55, but we had no homes in, in Lee Valley, and now we're just kind of swapping places, and I'm thinking that the Lee Valley one has been that way for 15 years consistently. And so by staying with Ward, going with option one, we now have option, Ward Three is now in all of Deerfield, and nothing is being changed with the exception of one particular block up in Lee Valley.
Yeah, I guess I see, I think about if Deerfield's talking to Deerfield, or Lee Valley's talking to Lee Valley, then they might have a little bit better communication inside there, so keeping them together seems to be my highest priority. I, I don't still understand what them taking a hit means, or, or they're inconvenienced, so I haven't seen that as far as what problems they'll have, so only logic I have is keeping them together. That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah.
I just will interject this, not on one, favoring one or the other. I just want to thank staff, Ms. Break, as well as Ms. Long and Mr. McManahan for giving their time to get this laid out. The, the only thing that this affects me is, don't make me vote, okay? That's all I get to hear, so.
We're going to make sure that happens.
You're right. Is there anybody else who'd like to add anything before we vote on this first option?
So if you look at, if you look at option, our scenario one, I mean, the numbers for Ward Three jumps to 1975, which is a greater number. So that, there's some growth there, I mean, right?
I'm not sure I understand that.
Well.
Our target was to keep it, we had a, our target, so we had specific parameters to keep it at 1972 or around, right? So in this scenario, you got 1975.
Seventy-five.
The other one's 1968, so taking a hit doesn't, I don't think it matters, I mean, it doesn't, people across the street from me are not in my ward, so I'm, you know, I mean, they, they look to me, but I mean, it doesn't matter, I don't think, we're going to have to continually do this puzzle every couple of years anyway, so.
Yeah, and in fairness, my ward, you're taking all my people.
You have too many.
Yeah.
Greedy?
Got a potential landfill in there, too.
That'll get rid of people.
Any other comments?
So we are on option one?
That's what the current motion is on the floor, is for option one, so. There's no other comments, I will go ahead and ask Ms. Break for, to call the vote.
Voting on a motion, on a motion to authorize the city clerk to send ward redistricting option number one to the Wyandotte County Election Office and the Kansas, and the Kansas Secretary of State for approval. Kip?
No.
Gurley?
No.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Uh-oh.
Comes down.
Blanks?
Sorry, Tom, no.
I think the, the rule is I do not have to vote, correct?
No.
So I don't know voting and it will fail because of a lack of votes, so I will accept another motion.
No.
No, the motion passed.
It passed.
It passed four to three.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was, Chris isn't here. Oh, Chris isn't here. Thank you. You didn't set me up after all. I thought you guys had set me up, so.
We tried.
So good, okay, so we are, we have passed that motion. We are now on to regular reports. So City Manager's report first.
Just wanted to put a reminder out there that Mayor's banquet is August twenty-second and Thiblo Days is August twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so that's next week coming up on us fast. Two weeks, two weeks, you're right. You're right. And then the tentative ribbon cutting date for the water treatment plant is September twenty-seventh at ten a.m. If anything changes with that, then we'll be sure to let you guys know. But Megan Gililand is working with the contractor to put a communication plan together about the changes with water.
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh, at ten a.m. And then prior to Sean leaving, we had discussed, and I think he had put it in a previous City Manager's report, to close offices on October fourteenth, which is Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day, to do an in-service training. So it wouldn't be a vacation day or a holiday. It would be a training day for all staff to attend and get some of our annual training out of the way and some extra training that we oftentimes don't have time to do. And it would also give an opportunity for some team building as well. So I wanted to run that by you, and if you have any concerns with that, please let me know. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and get started on planning that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ogan. We'll start with the City Council items, and we'll go ahead and start here with you and Mr. McEnahan.
Did we want to talk about the trash? Or bring it up? Trash. So I'm with Emily. I mean, there's, there's a growing concern about the consistency with, you know, and it's kind of hit and miss. I don't know what the pattern is. I did receive an email. I made sure that my, our constituent, right, was sending the email to you, Chris, to make you aware, right? Because that way you can, you're documenting and logging all this stuff and see where there's a pattern and so forth and all that, but just, okay, so with that, that's great. But my familiarity with the way trash works throughout the greater Kansas City area, there's not too many areas where you can almost set anything out and they'll pick it up. And I think that's huge when we, because I think you're always going to have personnel issues, regardless who we decide to bring on board, right? Just given the way businesses run and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm all about making some changes and stuff, but I, I really don't want to lose knowing that we have that. You know, we can set something out outside of what fits in the trash can and then pick it up, so that's good. But, and I, and, and not to make light of this or to, you know, to let these guys off easy, if you will. I think they're having trash pickups everywhere, everywhere, and it's just a part of it. And it's good that our, the people in our town are calling saying, hey, I need this taken care of, so, right? I mean, it's communication and stuff, but that's, that's all I have to add to that.
I agree with you, but I also think they need to be held to fulfill their contract to the best that they're possibly capable of, and I'm not convinced that they're doing that. Isn't there, I feel like there's a penalty clause in the contract, and is that being enforced?
There is a penalty clause in the contract, but the contract is between the UG and Waste Management. I know it has been enforced in past years when we, there was a time, probably four or five years ago now, that we had these same issues, and I know that there was a penalty enforced at that time.
And it's a financial penalty, correct?
Yes.
So that's going back into the UG coffers, not to us and our residents, and that's a problem.
Not to be too snarky. I wonder where the funds, those counties are being received. What, what general fund they going to, yes?
Not ours.
Anybody else want to comment on this subject before we go on with regular other council items?
I'd just like to say, I think Emily's right. We need to get some communication out there. I do appreciate the council members who have already spoken out on social media, because I see Danny a lot of times. Mayor, you've also, Emily, I know you have fielded these comments, just educating people on what actually the process is and what's going on. I will say, it is, you know, all over the place, even down in southwest Missouri where my mom lives, they have the same problem with trash. So I don't know if it matters who we're with, what's going to happen, but we do need to do something about it because people are upset, and I think communication goes a long, long way. So to the extent we can maybe educate folks about what the process is and what's happening, the better, but.
Is there any type of rebate for the, I know, I don't know if that email went to everybody on the council, but there was another constituent that was very upset and wanted a rebate on, you know, the days. I don't know what kind of proof they have to generate, or is it just tough luck? That's it. I mean, it seems a little heavy-handed just to, I mean, to say nothing.
We haven't issued many rebates at all in the past, and that's due to the fact that we still pay for that service to the UG. So it would be coming out of the rest of the funds.
Well, it definitely would be interesting to hear them explain, you know, what that rebate process is then, and, you know, does it, in all fairness, that should come back to us, and if it's egregious, if it's a one-day thing or whatever, I mean, I don't know. There has to be some type of statute.
I think citizens can call directly there with their complaints, which I think is a good idea. The more people that call in and say, hey, I've got a problem with trash is still there.
I've seen reports that the, and I can't confirm these, this is hearsay, but that Waste Management is telling people that they cannot speak to the residents and they have to call the UG.
Residents have to call three-one-one.
Yeah, and I've had people tell me that they, they call and they're not getting any, any reaction. I called a couple of times, and I asked exactly to the person I talked with, where are you? Well, one time it was California, and I'm trying to think where the other one was. It's like they only have three or four major, major hubs. And I, I, I'm kind of wondering, I see neighbors that don't get their trash out on time, or it's, it's sitting there. I don't know. Is there, what, what kind of fee are we paying, Amber, to Waste Management, our, our share of it?
Do you know how much the?
We only add a small amount for administrative costs, correct? It's mostly a pass-through. Could you say this into the mic in case somebody is listening, please?
On all of our enterprise funds, we transfer twenty-five percent, or five percent of the revenue to the general fund for administrat, for the billing, taking all the trash calls and, or just every, all the administration of each of it, so.
Would there be, is there an opportunity that, let's just say, for the sake of it, we have a hundred people that didn't get their trash picked up, and in the amount of money that we're paying in, deduct that from what we're paying in because they didn't provide the service?
We, the, I think the reason we've never done it is then you get into proof, like Roger said, maybe I didn't put my trash out till nine, and they came at eight, and I call and say they missed. So there's that.
Yeah.
You know, you get into a lot of documentation and, and.
The other problem we're having is that I watched last week, and I've watched several times before, the same person will pick up the trash bag and put it in the trash can or trash truck, and then they'll pick up the recycling and throw it in the trash truck. So we're not getting the service we're paying for.
Mm-hmm. Also, there's a, there's, depending on the day, in certain places in town, no, no place specifically where I've seen such a variety of things out there, you know, mirrors, tables, chairs.
But our contract says we can put anything.
Right, I, I know that.
I think that goes to Mr. McEnahan's point is if we change services and we lose large item pickup.
And, and what more would we end up losing that we are having right now?
Really, I think it comes down to is waiting for staff to get some numbers back from some different vendors and just see what those numbers look like.
What's the uptake in large item?
Right.
Maybe only a few people use it, and we're paying disproportionately too much for that service that sounds like a luxury, but.
We could have a twice-a-year large item pickup or something like that.
Yeah, but are we locked into a contract for how long?
There is a breakout clause.
There is? Okay.
I don't know, do we even have to break out clauses? We're just piggybacking on theirs, or, you know?
We do. We would have to give them, I think it's eighteen months notice.
Eighteen months?
Eighteen months notice, yes, and it is a very long-term contract.
I've been held hostage by much better things.
So if they were looking at maybe tweaking the, maybe going with another disposal service, they would have to let us know, right? And then we just, it's a unified.
Right, if, if they were looking.
It's got to be a fluid decision-making.
Yeah, I don't know that we would piggyback again if they went with another contract, but.
And I remember, this is an insane contract they signed. It was like fifty years or something.
It is a very long contract, and it was for the purpose that the trash pickup changes, and they wanted those same benefits in there for a very long term. So I think the expiration date isn't until another eight to ten years from now.
I may, I may have missed it, but isn't Edwardsville now with a separate carrier? Have we, have we, anybody heard how, how it's working for them, or?
Yeah, I'm talking to one of the council members down there. They've been real happy with their service.
But they have automatic arm pickup, correct?
Correct.
So everybody has to have the same trash receptacle, and there's nobody getting out of the truck.
You only get rid of what fits.
And that's.
They've lost some of the services.
One thing that I've noticed within the last couple of years that there were consistently some, like the same driver that I saw each time, and sometimes they'd have the same guys on the, on the back. And now it's sometimes I've seen one person get out and have to do everything, and never it seems to be the same person. So there, the numbers, it, wasn't, wasn't there something just recently where it showed that we had the lowest percentage in the area of problems with trash pickup? I wish I, I wish I remembered where it was.
I'd like to suggest and see a statement made as early as this week that we hear your concerns and frustrations. We have already, how many ever weeks ago, put out this call for open bids. State when the bid closing process is, and then say, within thirty days of the bid process being closed, we will release a public proposal, and in that would be who provided bids, at what cost monthly to the residents, and what specific services those include, and whether or not it's large item pickup, or what days they would come, or if it's specific to a specific trash can. Really line that out, and then I think we should offer a public survey to get input on.
I think a, a one-sheeter or at a glance, but all of those details are public.
I wouldn't necessarily ask for bids at this point in time, but we just need to give some feedback. No, I think she was going to request information about.
Right, we were, we were collecting RFPs and taking a look at them. We have not sent it out yet.
But a request for proposals, yeah. Because in theory, it's going to be hard to react to anything, act on anything for eighteen months. So those numbers will change before, it's just about getting the information to make a decision one way or the other if we want to start the timer for eighteen months from now to replace Waste Management, so. It's, first is getting the, getting the numbers and find out, and so that our residents know what they'll lose, what they'll gain, et cetera.
We'll get opportunity to point people to the council agendas, because all of that would be documentation that would come before us and would be included in the agenda packets.
But yeah, I still think we should release a statement that we hear you and we're working on it.
Anything else on trash items? If not, did you have anything else, Mr. McEnahan?
I.
Okay, Ms. Gurley, items? I'll just come back to you. Up to you.
Mike? Mike?
Your mic.
Farmer's Market is doing well. I've had two good reports. The habanero jelly is insanely good. Danny painted up my daughter's face, and I just love seeing that grow, and thanks for everybody that's working on that. I know that takes a, literally a village. That's it.
We're, we're going to go back to Ms. Gurley here because she remembers.
I remembered. Do we have any sort of update on the Dairy Dine property? I've had a couple of people ask about it, and particularly mention that perhaps it could be somewhat cleaned up a little bit as we approach Thiblo Days, and that is something that thousands of people will see.
I'll talk with Community Development and see if they have any communication with them about the status of the cleanup around the facility. I know that we haven't seen any movement yet on permits or anything permit going in there, but we can certainly ask them to clean it up.
To my knowledge, with my last conversation with the owner, is here soon. He'll be getting with the city to move forward on the process of the project, and that was about two weeks ago.
Mr. Shannon? Don't, you forgot. That's why you make notes. We'll come back to you, Mr. Shannon, if you remember, so. Ms. Blanks?
I had the great privilege of speaking at USD two of force convocation today, which was amazing and incredibly inspiring. We just have some really, really great educators and staff, and it was just really, really cool. And if you are out and about, make sure if you run into Rick Mullen, he's now officially the new superintendent, and he was the keynote speaker on it and just absolutely killed it. Made me want to cry like twice, and then after convocation, I went to Teresa's office and actually started crying because it was just so inspiring, and we're just so lucky. And one of my new goals this year is to really partner even more with, with the school district, especially some lower-level grades that Teresa and I talked about. So thank you to Teresa and all the work that you do and at the school. It's just, it's really, really amazing. My favorite thing that Rick asked, we did kind of a numbers thing, and he said, stand up if you are Bonner Springs alumni who now works in the district, and it was just overwhelming how many people stood up that choose to go get education elsewhere and then come back and serve their community. That was just really incredible and speaks volumes to our district and our community. Tomorrow, actually, the Chambers Morning Mingle is at the BTEC Center from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. If you have not had a chance to tour the BTEC Center, it is unbelievable. I know districts from all over the country come tour our BTEC Center in the hopes of having one for their students to provide hands-on, career-driven learning. That's just amazing. So yes, that's, Teresa is hosting that with me tomorrow from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. So if you are free, please come by. It's pretty great. Thiblo Days is in two weeks. I would love to see as many of you there as possible. If you have not RSVP'd to Chris for the banquet or to be in the parade, please do so. Thank you to Chris for working on both of those aspects of Thiblo Days, as they're very important. And then on a random note, Third Space is open on Mondays until seven and Fridays, but more specifically, just to remind council or anybody who comes to council, if you're looking for a late-night bite or lemonade or coffee, please go support Third Space on Mondays because now we can go utilize them. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
I just want to, to talk a little bit about the farmer's market as well. Thank you, Mark, for not only going to the farmer's market, but also making that comment. It's been a great transition over to the pavilion. We are seeing really, really good numbers every single. We are seeing really, really good numbers every single week. It's also been a challenging transition, so I want to thank the city and PD for supporting me and us whenever we've needed it and helping with that transition along the way, and it's only getting bigger and bigger. So I'm really so grateful to the community and everyone that comes out and supports it every Saturday, so thank you.
Along that same line, make sure that everybody that knows about, I've been talking to people in the community that says, have you been down there to see the Pavilion for the Farmer's Market? No, so, yeah, there's people out there still not aware of it, so make your neighbors aware of that. Also, thank you to the city staff for killing the weeds along Spring Creek, they did a good job on that. We'll talk about Spring Creek as we go on with other items in the next year. The cemetery looks good, the pond looks good. Did somebody put something in the pond to kill the, the cattails that were in there, it looks like they did?
They do every year, I don't know specifically what timeframe they did.
It looks like they did, and I thank them for that, okay? So thank you. The north side of Metropolitan Avenue has grown up, it's probably three or four feet high. It needs to be taken care of, we need to call that utility company, whichever one of them owns that land, and have them knock all that down. On the south side of that, whoever did that, I'm glad they knocked all the weeds down and so forth on the south side of Metropolitan. But it still looks pretty ratty there, if they could do something to clean that up a little bit more. Other than that, glad just to be here.
I did not have a mayor's report attached this meeting. It's been, I've had a lot of things going on, but I have not had any major events, meetings that I had to go. It's a slow time for that in the month of August, July and August, so. But I do have a list of things I want to cover, some of them came up tonight, like the Pavilion. I do want to mention that I've also brought this to staff's attention, that the Pavilion fans are phenomenal. And I think the, those who utilize the facility during the daytime hours to park also love the fans because they're turning them on during the day and letting them run all day long and into the evenings, so. I've alerted staff, we may need to do a little, a little bit of a lockdown box on those fans, so they're not getting turned on. What's that? Something, well, we want to have access when, if we have gathering or something that somebody has actually has plans for and has reserved the Pavilion, we want to make those available to them. Also, in conjunction with the school, since there was a little bit of a theme on the school, we haven't finalized anything yet, but Ms. Brake and I have talked a couple of times about, in the past, we've done what's called a youth mock council. And where we bring up kids from, the grade school come in, and we put on during the day, those who can attend, we appreciate any of the council members who can attend, and we put on a little bit of the council forum with kind of a list of fun little things, you know, things we're voting on. And so that is something we're looking at, potentially wanting to maybe arrange one sometime this school season in conjunction with the Mayor's Youth Council, which we're going to be starting back up this year. And I think Mr. McMahon in the back, Mr. Tyler McMahon, the younger one, junior, he has also submitted a list of eight individuals, two from each class, or to select to be on the Mayor's Youth Council. We're going to get that started up here pretty quick. Also, the RFPs for selecting a search firm for our new city manager, those are due at the noon on Friday. So next week, I would like to see if there would be a couple council members who would be interested in working with me as a selection committee to try to look through those initially and put our recommendation forward to the council. The council will see all of them, but we'll spend a little time and try to put something forward to the council, so that way, the council as a whole, when they come in on that next meeting, will have an idea of which one we felt was probably the one they need to spend the most attention on. So is there anybody, if you want to send me a notification, an email, and let me know if you're interested?
I'm interested, Tom.
Okay, so we got at least three, we're going, only, I'm going to only ask two, so. I got a bunch of them, I'll tell you what, we'll give a little bit of distribution here. Did you say who, Ms. Blanks and Ms. Long, which one of you? I want to keep it to two, so we got Mr. Reeve, so. Okay, so Ms. Blanks? Sorry, you've been shut out. Okay, so I will, I will coordinate with staff when we get those in, and we'll see what times are available, what suits everyone. In the staff report, or the city manager's report, the mural project, it was good to see that onboard, is there a chance we'll be able to have the two artists possibly come in front of the council prior to starting and kind of give us a, an idea, so we can kind of meet them and get an idea of what we should expect those murals will, will look like?
Sure, I'm sure that we can have them come in either in person or virtually.
I think, I think the council would appreciate, yeah, I think they would love having that.
We are close to finalizing those. We've picked both projects and both artists. They have gone back to for revisions per the committee's request that we all agreed on. One of them does live in Austin, Texas, but she's originally from the Lawrence area, so we could have her come on board. We're looking at getting these done both in early October.
Right, I saw the dates on it, so that way, if, like I said, once we get that all finalized, if maybe we just have a September council meeting, maybe just have them for a few minutes, just kind of give us a little presentation of what to expect.
They're both really cool, I think everybody's going to be happy.
City Hall selfies. Now, is this a strictly a staff, or are you putting, encouraging elected officials to show up if we can?
Anyone can show up, so City Hall selfie day is August 15th. We'll be taking a selfie out here in front of the City Hall meeting at the elevator lobby on that day at 8:15, so anyone is welcome to join, or you're welcome to stop by anytime to take a picture at City Hall or the library or any of the city facilities. It's just a social media campaign that's been going on for a few years that just kind of puts public service out in the forefront.
I'm going to make my best effort to be there. Okay, we'll work on that. In the meantime, yeah, I encourage also, all the elected officials to be there if possible. Just remember, when we're there, do not discuss any city business. Want to make sure that's, you do follow the coma. Also, I saw the, they're looking at the switchover for the water. And when was that, September 1st, was it?
By Labor Day, yes.
Now, do they give a timeline, is there, is there an expectation might take three, four days before that water flow goes through the system, and people are really, truly getting this off water, is that, about how many days do you think?
There will be a transition, transition period. I think they said something around a week, but that'll be part of the communication campaign that we do is to inform people, these are some changes that you may see, so just be aware.
Good, as long as we're letting people know that, because nothing worse than on September 2nd getting calls, my water's not soft, so, so about a week. And with that then, I have nothing else, does anybody else have any additional things to add, questions? Oh, Mr. Reeve?
You got your speech prepared?
Sure. How many dad jokes can you handle? And with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
All those in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Yes, I did.
Oh, yeah, I was supposed to talk to you about what the commitments are.
I asked her if she'd be interested. But she needs to talk to you to find out how dreadful it is.
Once a month, first Wednesday of the month.
Yes, with the tornado sirens?
Yes, he says something to his mom today.
Yes, we do.
Well, last, last year, both my sons, no, I think Bentley, my grandson, so, but Bentley's there too, and he makes a mess, so we don't want to take any chances, and I think Blake's doing extra, I know, he's doing extra duty. Well, I mean, I can say something to Lee. You sure wouldn't interrupt the flow? He will clean his mess up. Okay, I'll talk to Lee. I know Grandma will be good.